Could you keep, read the roll please, Angie?
Here.
Here.
And Jack McCann's absent, so we have four members present. Okay, first order of business is to approve the meeting minutes from the April 6th meeting. Do we have a resolution to that effect?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the minutes.
Okay, do we have a second? John? Okay, all in favor?
I.
I opposed, Carrie. Okay, our first case, which was tabled from last month, PLZBA 2022-0035, 15 Northern Drive, shopping center, commercial area, use variance required. The applicant Sarah Sarushka is proposing to utilize an now vacant building for the sale of automobiles. Requires a use variance. The applicant wants to come forward. I believe that, come ahead. I believe the reason you're back is because this is a used variance, so therefore you're required to present financial information as to why you can't put something in there that would be allowed.
Hi, everyone.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'm gonna call my husband, but yes, and I think we already submit the document as well, so.
Say it again, I'm sorry.
We already submit the regard of.
Yes, so financial statements are required in, I thought like a statement was required from us explaining that why we are requiring the variance.
Right, and but part of the, part of the reason why you need to use variance, why you can't, one of the reasons why you can't put something in there that is allowed is because financially speaking, it isn't, doesn't make sense. Okay, like you had the information in here about how much it would cost, et cetera, et cetera, to put in the boutique.
Correct. I mean, that was an example.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but that was, that was the sort of a thing, why this building is not appropriate for something like that. You had information in here too about, you know, there's no room for shelves if you want to put in a delicatessen or blah, 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 such a small building and so forth and so on.
Yes.
But where it would be appropriate for you to put in your car selling, sales spot. So if you could just explain that to us.
Okay, for car selling, the main reason was we both have experience in that field. That's one thing. And the financing, our financing, money wise, depends on a friend of ours who already have existing business, they are in business, and they are agreeing to finance our project. Instead of going to a financial institution or a bank, we are getting a private financing. They committed to help us set up a dealership, and that's how we are gonna arrange the finances. That was our plan. I mean, it's explained in the, in my like statement, more not a financial statement, but that was there. And I thought that if financial documents were required, I thought that somebody's gonna ask for them, and I'll provide them by the time we'll be here for the meeting. So they were not requested, so I didn't bring my personal bank statement or anything explaining where we stand.
Oh yeah, no, I don't think that's necessary.
Yeah.
The personal bank statement. I, go ahead.
Because you know, it's already the.
If you take the microphone, please, sorry.
It's already existing a structure. We don't have to do anything with that. We don't have to do demolishing or anything. And that's, we can use as an office building without using any penny. And we can start the business as soon as you guys approve, and then we go through DMB, and in couple months, we can go in business. That would be beneficial for the neighborhood. We can create employment and extra. But if we go to like, we already mentioned in our statement, if you like to go and check like bottom of the pay, bottom of the pages, you know, it's gonna be, I mean, oh, this is not what we, I mean, we experienced, first of all, we cannot do that, like, we cannot invest money. We don't have that kind of money. And.
The money which is required to demolish and start.
Right.
This thing's structure, existing structure is so small in size that it won't, won't fit with any of the allowed uses. I mean, especially that's commercial area where the current requirement is half an acre. So we will be requiring other variants to fit in that small space.
Right, right.
And, you know, so we thought that it's the shortest path to get in business, just with one variance. And doing anything else will also require several variants. For the size of the lot and stuff, it don't match with the requirements. So.
Right.
And that is like unnecessary, you know, hardship. We consider it's hardship for anyone, not only for us, but anyone who developed that piece of land for one of those uses.
Right, right. Go ahead, Mark. Yeah, yeah. For the record.
Hello, okay. So, my question, I guess, is why is this not a self-created hardship? You're making the decision, and you haven't purchased the property yet, correct?
No.
But you're making the decision to purchase it conditioned on being able to do this. So why is this not a self-created hardship? If this is your plan, this is what you wanna do. Why is this not self-created as a problem?
Because it, this is the process that's required. I mean, that, that's how we signed the contract, and the information we had, they, everybody advised that this is the right way to do it. Instead of finalizing the deal, that, that's how it is supposed to be done, to get approved it first, what your plans are, and then go through.
Oh, I agree with you, yeah. Doing this first, I think, I agree, it's the right thing to do. But in order to grant a use variance, you need to prove to this board that the reason that you're requesting it is not self-created. You didn't create this problem that needs a solution. Does that make sense? So you're asking to do something that you can't normally do on this lot, and you're saying it's not self-created. It's not, you didn't create the problem of wanting to do something that you can't already do on this lot, and I'm asking why?
Can, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't get it. Can you?
It's okay. So there are allowable uses on this particular lot. It's a B3 zone property. There are things you can do. This used to be a gas station. It could be a gas station, again, with a special use permit.
Right.
It could be other things. And one of the questions is, on the application, is whether or not you've exhausted every possibility of doing something different to make this lot profitable. And you even say in there that you have, and you said that many of the uses are not, you know, things that could work, but not necessarily every one of them. And I'm asking, have you explored the possibility of doing something else with this lot, like a gas station or something else that's allowable under the B3 zoning?
I did my homework. I mean, I don't have it in writing, but I was thinking to utilize for many other uses. But financially, when I did my research, go through the numbers, it's not gonna be feasible to spend the kind of money required to utilize the place for that purpose. It's not gonna be profitable, in my opinion, and the research I had. I didn't bring it. I, I didn't know that how important it's gonna be in the meeting. But I did my homework, and I talked to several people, took advice and everything. Considering all the uses, I discussed with them, and they don't seem possible for many reasons, especially financial reason. Even if I come up with the best idea, best option, it's gonna take a lot of time to recover the money needed to be invested to, to do something where the digging and everything is involved, excavation, things like that. So financially, it's not gonna be feasible. That, that's why it's gonna be hard for us to go through that. Yeah, B3, as I said, that a lot of uses, like E3 requires half acre lot, but it's not half acre, it's.
For B3 uses, you'd need half an acre. But B3 also encompasses B2 and B1.
Yes.
Well, that's correct. But the, the lot characteristics that are typically required for a newly created lot in the B3, the minimum lot area is 25,000 square feet. This is a third of an acre, so it's 14, yeah, 14, 15,000.
And Aaron, you might know the answer to this question. How much, what's the length of the frontage to Northern Drive of this lot? And the only reason I ask is because one of the requirements, I think, under 285, 75, is that there needs to be 100 feet.
I have that.
But I just wanted to tell for sure.
I think I have that information. I mean.
I, I don't have that on, I don't have that available. It is, it would appear to be close to 100 feet, but I, but I can't, I can't.
And the only reason I ask again is because one of the other requirements under the zoning code, if you're gonna operate a car dealership, is that you have 100 feet fronting a public street. So if this doesn't, they're gonna be back in a month asking for another variance.
I had the building measurements, but not actually lot, but they can be accessed.
While we're looking that up, is there anybody else? John, did you have some questions or anything you wanted to ask or tell, say?
It seemed to me, after the discussion last time, the approval seemed to hinge on the, the application didn't include any kind of proof that this lot, as Stan, could, could yield a reasonable return. And I guess that wasn't clear to the applicant. That's what I'm hearing now.
But, but they have shown here why, as far as the, you know, a delicatessen and, and a couple of other things here, they have boutique, little store, whatever, why they wouldn't be feasible on this small piece of property. Even though they have, you know, those are the things. And here they have, here are branch banks insufficient. I mean, you know, you, you don't have to have things in writing to know that a branch bank isn't gonna be able to fit on that property. You know what I mean? A lot of these things, the allowed uses, I don't see Raymore and Flanagan going there. Or YWC or YMCA health-related facility, you know, I mean, for a lot of these things, we kind of just have to use our heads, right? And say, they're not gonna go on that property. And they are allowed uses in that area.
And I had one document, I don't know if it's there or not, but this is like, I, it's an example of one actual dealership with the size and their financial report, that out of the similar lot, what their returns are. So it's like actual printout from DMB, that how many numbers of cars they are selling with the picture and everything. So I don't know if it was in the system or not, but I brought the hard copy.
We, we did get that.
Oh, you, you did get that? For the Campbell Avenue lot?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes, so I had the financial.
Eastside sales.
Yeah.
And it's like much smaller than what we have here. And it's, I, pretty much identical to what we are talking about, very small building and.
Right.
I do have, I do have the answer on the frontage. They have 141.24 feet of frontage.
That's what they have?
They exceed, yeah, they exceed the 100 foot minimum that's required.
Okay.
So there has, there has been a submission to answer the question, that fiscally, they, they can't realize a reasonable return on the property.
Well, and all of these.
On another use.
On the allowed uses in that, in that.
The allowed uses based on the existing building. Is that, that's what you, you indicated in the paperwork, is that based on the existing building, which is a smaller structure?
Yes.
You couldn't, you couldn't seek a reasonable return because you couldn't put those uses within that particular structure.
Yes.
And we talked about last month.
Go ahead, Katie.
I was just gonna say, we talked about last month, that any other use which included demolishing that building would also include excavating the tanks that were previously there. Is that correct?
Correct. It's entirely reasonable to, to assume that reusing this site, if it, if it means demolishing the building, could, could incur soil remediation costs and things like that.
Right, yeah, we did.
So anybody who wants to do new construction on this lot is gonna incur substantial costs associated with fixing it. Because unless they wanna put a gas, gas station.
Even if they wanna put a gas station in there, they could still run into that because they'd have to put in new tanks. And we actually just had a gas station elsewhere in Troy, near, in my neighborhood, that chose to remove the tanks, remediate the soil, and that's it. They're not gonna have gas anymore because of the cost to do that. So.
Yeah.
There's also, I believe there is a gas station down the street from this parcel.
Pit stop.
Not that.
Right.
You don't have gas stations across the street from one another, but.
One, a mile up.
Right.
You know, it's a little competition.
Right. Okay, we have any further questions for the applicant? Anybody to speak in favor of this proposal? Anybody to speak in opposition? Okay, so are we ready to move forward with the vote? Before we do the secret, or I mean, after we do the secret?
Madam Chair, for, thank you, PLZBA 2022-0035, I'd ask that the board find this proposal to be an unlisted action with sufficient information available on which to make a determination that the project is not expected to cause significant environmental impact.
Do we have a second on that? All in favor? I opposed, Carrie. Do we have a motion on the application?
Madam Chair, for PLZBA 2022-0035, I would make a motion to approve the variance as written, based on the representations by the applicant and based on representations by planning and engineering. I just don't believe there's any other way to realize a reasonable return for this particular space. This is a unique, a unique ask. I don't think it's gonna substantially impact the neighborhood or the district at all. I don't think it's gonna alter the character of the neighborhood at all, and I do not believe, based on the representations made, that it's gonna, that it was a self-created hardship.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
John seconds, and on the motion, Katie McLaren?
I vote yes to approve.
John Armile?
I vote yes to approve.
Kathy Conroy, I vote yes to approve. Mark Pulasi?
Yes.
Okay, so there you go. Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck. You just move on. Sure, good luck to you.
Yeah, yeah, the next step is you reach out to, you can either reach out to my office or, or building permits.
Okay.
Because I'm assuming you guys are gonna wanna get in there and start doing some work on the, on the building itself.
Yes.
In the lot. So, yeah, I mean, you can shoot me an email or, or give me a call, and we can chat about next steps.
So the approval wise, do we, is it gonna be in writing, some piece of paper?
Oh, absolutely. This, this approval will absolutely be in writing. You'll wanna keep that.
I can just connect.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Take care.
Okay, take care. You too. Next case, PLZBA 2022-0052, 41 to 43 Third Street, the Trojan Hotel. The applicant Neil Pallone Architecture, PLLC, on behalf of the owner Trojan Rising LLC, is proposing to install 28 apartments on the upper floors over two separate commercial spaces. They need an area variance to do that. The maximum density required is 80 units per acre, and they are proposing 240 units per acre. So the relief of 160 units per acre is being sought. So Neil, you're there?
Yeah.
I gather, okay.
My, oh.
Is that your case?
Hi, guys. Good evening. I'm working with the development team for the Trojan Hotel. We're here for a variance, or as the project has been described, it's going from, the building was originally built as an SRO. We figure around 70 units for that SRO. And the proposed project is market rate apartments, and in order to provide what is expected in an apartment these days, the, the unit count's already being drastically reduced from somewhere in the 70s to 28 and likely fewer. And I think, it's, it's my opinion that the way the zoning law is written skews our unit density due to the small lot size and the volume of the building as it exists. So we propose that this building remains residential as it was originally constructed. And yeah, we just think the, the math is skewed with the zoning requirements in this particular case. I think it's in the interest of the neighborhood to restore this building to service. It's been vacant for as long as I've been here in Troy, this round anyway. Yeah, seems pretty sort of administrative, unless you guys disagree.
Could you tell us why, and maybe you just did, but I'm not quite sure, why you have to have 28 apartments and you can't do it with less?
Um, we could do it with, well, hmm, I don't have the particular math for the return on investment for the construction cost to proposed rental income. But based on my experience and having lived here in Troy, that the, the apartments would start to get too big, right? We'd be making too few doors. You'd start to, is that, are you, whether we do 27 or 29, I don't, I don't have that, that line to cross in terms of which, you know, at 28 we're profitable and 27 we aren't. There is some room in there, but we're already cutting, we're going from a 70-something unit building to a 28-unit building. I understand the nature of the question, which is why is, right, why is this not financially feasible to do it at 27? We probably could. At 26, we probably could. At 25, the developers are probably gonna walk, you know. So at what point is, does the math get real and the expense get real? And that's after we get our construction drawings going. These are the numbers that the developers are considering. These result, the 28 units result in about 700 square foot, 600 to 700 square foot apartments, so we can't get any more units. So that's how that number is derived, is the maximum number of units to provide a product that isn't too small.
Is it? It would all probably be one bedroom, right?
These are studios and one bedrooms. At the 28.
Right, right.
Yeah. So, um. Is, is this, is this enough information? I, I know we're supposed to have like.
Well, no, I mean, I'm just saying, you know, you, you, and this is just really, I mean, this is for the record. It's, it's not gonna be, you know, a piece of cake. We're here to do a job. And even though I personally think it's a wonderful idea, you know, you have to have some indication, as you just explained, why you need the variance. You know, I mean, you can't just, and, and you gave a good explanation. I mean, they're gonna walk at 25. Well, you assume, and that's fine. But then again, it's, no, no, I mean, I'm just saying, you want 20, you wanna put in 28, and you're thinking maybe 25 is the absolute minimum.
Well, yeah, so.
But I mean, what's the difference between 28 and 25? Nothing to get excited about. You know what I mean? In my, I don't think, I mean, if you're gonna jump down to 14, then that's a big difference. You're gonna go from 28 to 25. And I'm not, you know what I'm saying? Katie, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, the reality does, the reality is, if, if this building were on a bigger lot, the.
The math would be different.
The math would be different. The numbers would not be the same.
If what I'm hearing is correct, the benefit your client is seeking to receive cannot be achieved at 25 or 24. It's, to be profitable, it needs to be at the numbers that you're proposing.
That's what you said, and that's true. And, but I was just trying to get you to say.
Right, well, yeah, I mean, the reality is, is I'm not privy to their, the real math, right? It's a bit of a game. I.
But if you're the architect, you're the architect, they must have given you an indication kind of of how many apartments they wanted you to make.
We're, we're already, yeah, so in my, we work on, you know, historic tax credit projects, which this is, we do a number of conversions. And my professional opinion is, we're all, from what I've seen with other projects and other clients, they're already struggling. So everyone loves the building, they love the location, and I can, just as an outsider even, I can, I can see how there, this is a challenge to make this profitable.
Can I ask how long Trojan Rising has owned this building?
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. And the reason I ask is because we've gotten, we received a letter from someone in the neighborhood about the poor upkeep of the property in the past, as far as, you know, neighbors having to shovel the snow because it wasn't done, that kind of thing. So they're just kind of, you know, wanting us to be aware of that. It also mentioned parking, which really is not, has nothing to do with why we're here. But I, you know, for us, at least, I can speak for myself, the upkeep of the property is a big concern.
Yeah, for sure. The indication was that they are, they were the owners of the building. Well, it has been not taken care of outside. Now, maybe they weren't. That's what the guy said.
Oh, thank you. Okay. So during the time period that this citizen was talking about, this group would have owned the building. So I'm just.
Okay, so it was 2021.
October 2021.
So the end of 2021. So eight, what month is it?
Hey.
Six, so six months, they've owned it for six months.
1-1-2, which wasn't.
Well.
If it's an indication, but if it's an indication of how someone's going to take care of the property, that isn't, doesn't give you a good feeling of your neighbor. So that would be the point. But you know what? Maybe they, whatever, maybe they didn't take such good care of, because there wasn't anybody in there. You know, they might not have bought it. But in any, it was a question that we needed to address. And since you're the representative, there are no other representatives here tonight except you for this building. Am I correct? Neil?
Oh, yeah, as far as I, I know, I'm the only representative here.
Yeah. John, did you?
If, please, please don't take that as a lack of interest. We all thought we were on last month's agenda. There was a paperwork or administrative staff who.
I wouldn't take it as a lack of interest, but if there was somebody there who could answer the question, you didn't know when.
Yeah, no, I would have.
Of other things, and maybe somebody else here who did. That was the only reason I bring it up.
And someone who could speak to.
Of why they didn't shovel the sidewalk.
Well.
Right.
Well, guys, okay.
Since you're gonna do that. But anyway, John, did you have any questions? Okay. Is anybody else here to speak in favor of this proposal? I saw a couple of other names up there on the screen.
Angie? Yeah, there's two other.
If, are they here to speak in favor or in opposition?
I don't see their hands raised.
Enough in favor, how about in opposition? Anybody here to speak in opposition? No.
I see a hand.
Load entry. Why don't I see?
Ethan Warren with CDTA would like to.
Okay.
Yeah, hi, everybody. I sent a letter. I'm actually in favor. I just was a little late on the hand. I hope that's okay.
That's perfectly all right.
Okay, so this is 600 feet from our riverfront station, and the only thing I wanted to point out is that if there are concerns about parking or density, that some of that should be alleviated by the provision of transit. So I submitted a letter in favor of the variance.
Okay, that's a good point.
Was the substance of the letter that we received in opposition to the project.
Was about.
It was about parking.
Oh, that, not. The parking was the issue, but parking is not an issue. Right, right, right. Okay, thanks very much, Ethan. That's good to know. Well put. Somebody works in Albany or whatever. Anybody else? There was another person, they're not speaking? Alexandra, maybe, perhaps?
I'm in favor.
Alexandra, Alexandra works on the project.
I did. But nevertheless, absolutely.
Um, I don't know if you know the. Um, I don't know if you know the answer to this, but is it possible that the project, um, will offer some kind of incentive um, for residents to use public transit?
Uh, like, could you give an example besides providing no parking?
Um, you know, I don't know. We've talked about that with other projects, like bus passes for, you know, residents who will, because you're right on the bus line, um, residents who might just kind of incentivizing and encouraging, like, will you have bike racks for people who, um, you know, might choose to use a bicycle as their primary? We've had, we've had developments, um, in the city in the past where they had a devoted room to, um, residents to be able to lock up their bikes in the building. And I'm, that's a deal breaker. I'm just asking if that.
I, I would ask, on behalf of the project, I'd ask that if, that that not be a condition of approval. And, um, but to follow that up is the team in general is interested in alternative modes of transportation, participating in the urban fabric. There are a number of spaces in the basement that I imagine will be turned into storage and common, uh, amenities for the building, but it hasn't been specified. Um, if that became a condition of approval, then I'm sure.
I'm not suggesting that it should be. I'm just asking a question because I think it's, um, I think it's right for the community, basically.
I, 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 I agree, but I also don't think in this case that that's a, should be a condition of.
No, I agree with.
Okay, do we have any other questions or comments? New secret, please?
Uh, Madam Chair for P L Z B A twenty twenty-two zero zero fifty-two. Um, I'd ask the board find this proposal to be an unlisted action with sufficient information av- available upon which to make a determination that the project is not expected to cause significant environmental impact.
You have a second?
John seconds, all in favor? I opposed, carried. Do we have a motion for the project?
Do you want to do it, Katie?
Yeah. Madam Chair for P L Z B A twenty twenty-two dash zero zero fifty-two. Um, I make a move to approve the area variance. Um, for, I'm sorry, for the maximum density, um, based on the following findings of fact, I do not believe that an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood. In fact, it will be the opposite of that. Um, renovating a vacant building um, and improving, um, the character of the neighborhood. Um, I think we've discussed that the benefits sought by the applicant can't be achieved by another feasible, um, method. Um, I don't believe it's a substantial variance. It's actually a decrease from what was previously um, done in the building. Um, and I, again, I don't think it will have an adverse effect on the neighborhood. I think, in fact, the physical environmental conditions in the neighborhood will improve.
Okay, we have a second. John Normile seconds on the motion. Mr. Normile?
I vote yes to approve.
Mark Palazzi?
Yes, to approve.
Kathy Conroy, yes to approve. Katie McLaren?
Yes, to approve.
Okay, good luck.
Thanks, everyone.
You have a motion to adjourn?
Uh, no, John do it. He's been seconding all night. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
And we're all in favor, I presume?